I have started the broadcast. I've started the broadcast.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 26, 2021 special meeting of the Prince George's Board of Education meeting. Before we begin, I would like to ask everyone to turn off any wireless communication devices and mute your microphones to avoid any technical interference with the meeting. Also, we would be using Zoom's Spanish interpretation services this evening. Please listen to the following announcement regarding interpretation services during tonight's meeting.
Interpretation services, simultaneous interpretation is available in Spanish. La interpretación simultánea está disponible en español. On a computer at the bottom of the screen will be an interpretation globe. Click that globe and then select Spanish. En una computadora, en la parte baja de la pantalla habrá un globo de interpretación. Haga clic en ese globo y seleccione Spanish. On a mobile device at the bottom of the screen, tap the ellipses icon on the bottom right. Three dots. Tap language interpretation. Tap Spanish. En un dispositivo móvil, en la parte baja de la pantalla, toca el icono de elipses en la parte baja de la derecha. Dos tres puntos. Toque language interpretation. Toque Spanish. Thank you. Gracias.
This, thank you. This meeting is being recorded for those who cannot observe now, and information will be on our board web page. Ms. Berkeley, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Adam Stafford. Mrs. Ahmed.
Here.
Ms. Boozer Struther.
Here.
Mr. Burrows.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Jackson.
Present.
Mr. Montero.
Here.
Mrs. Queen.
I'm sorry, I'm here, but I'm driving my car, so if y'all get a delay from me, that's why.
Mr. Murray.
Right here, present.
Mr. Thomas. Mr. Valentine.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Present.
Dr. Miller.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have established a quorum. Now we will adopt the agenda for tonight's special meeting. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved in second. Is there any discussion? No discussion here, none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Any abstentions? Unanimously, we have voted to adopt the agenda. Now, the special meeting item. Two point one, Board Legal Counsel. The purpose of this meeting is to provide the status of a contract for interim legal services for the Board of Education. Initially, a contract was developed at a special board meeting on April 28, 2021. It had been negotiated and procured by Board Member Murray for legal sufficiency and then negotiated by Board Member Burrows with a firm. At that.
That's true.
At that April 28 meeting, the seven members voted to, uh, would you mute everyone, please? At the April.
Dr. Miller, you're muted.
You're part of everyone, Dr. Miller, with the meeting.
We can hear you now.
Thank you.
At the April 25th, April 28th meeting, the seven, seven members voted to procure the services of Attorney Rosalind Pugh of the Pugh firm. The members also voted to have, uh, Board Member Burrows sign the contract if the chair did not sign it by April 30. It should be noted that board members cannot vote to supersede the authority of the chair. That being said, Mr. Burrows apparently signed the contract with Ms. Pugh, but never provided a signed copy to the chair. On May 6, a special board meeting was scheduled to further discuss the legal services needed. None of the April 28 meeting board members, uh, member attendees showed up, thus no quarrel. However, before the meeting, the May 6 special meeting began, Vice Chair Sonia Williams introduced herself to a panelist unknown to her and inquired about her purpose for attending this meeting. The panelist introduced herself as Rosalind Pugh, the Board's Legal Counsel. Ms. Williams further inquired if she had a contract, and Ms. Pugh replied, yes. The chair then asked who had signed it, and Ms. Pugh replied, Mr. Edward Burrows. Because neither chair nor vice chair has seen nor been informed that Mr. Burrows had conducted this transaction, the chair asked Ms. Pugh to excuse herself from that meeting. To the public who has entrusted us as stewards of taxpayer dollars, this will surprise you that Board Member Burrows obligated the Board of Education funds without authority to do so. This was an egregious violation of state statute and Bible.
Madam Chair, madam chair. Madam Chair, can I interrupt for a second? I believe your papers are close to the microphone and causing interference.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Where did I, where did I leave off before I was interrupted?
You were stating untrue things as you.
Also, you're also interrupting.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. If you like, I can continue where you left off.
Okay.
Okay. At the last meeting, May 12, since no answers were provided to questions regarding the procurement process used to procure interim legal services through the Pugh Law Group, the vice chair stated the following. The chair and vice chair will meet with the Pugh Law Group to sign a, sorry. The chair and vice chair will meet with the Pugh Law Group and sign a contract with legal counsel within two weeks. On May 18, the chair and vice chair had to cancel a meeting that was scheduled to meet with Ms. Pugh collectively. However, each of them subsequently met with Ms. Pugh by phone. On May 21, Ms. Pugh sent a letter to the chair asking to be withdrawn from consideration. In an effort to meet the goal of ensuring the board had legal counsel, the second firm under consideration was forwarded to procurement for contracting. Procurement worked through the contracting process directly with the second choice of legal counsel and executed a contract to date to place the law firm of Karpinski, Cornbrook, and Karp under contract on behalf of the board. Under the authority of the procurement procedures and process, this is being shared with the board and the public to be informed, as was promised, that the board has signed a, sorry, that the board has a signed contract to have legal service representation. Karpinski, Cornbrooks, and Karp is an AV-rated law firm, which means they have received the highest level of professional excellence as a firm that can be ranked by its fear, its peers. They are headquarters out of Baltimore City and have many years of experience in legislation, NPIA, Open Meetings Act, public ethics law, and procedures. Their firm has attorneys who are experts in employment matters, government issues, the code of Maryland, and the like. They are recognized, they recognize the importance of open and timely communications with their clients, and value early recognition of cases for settlement and or disposition. We are excited to have them on board and look forward to them serving us until a permanent legal counsel can be procured through a competitive process. Today, today, the chair is advising the board of a contract that has been vetted and signed off by the procurement officer, Mr. Kevin, sorry, Keith Stewart.
He's Stewart.
Yes, Keith Stewart, and we have engaged the interim counsel services of the law firm of Karpinski, Cornbrook, and Karp.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I see, I'll recognize Ms. Board Member Ahmed.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. I, I'm just a little bit confused, so we convened this meeting so that y'all could inform, uh, form us that you signed a contract that we didn't vote on.
We did not sign the contract. It was signed by the procurement office through using procurement procedures and processes.
And I'd like to take, make another note that the contract is the same contract similar. And I say similar because it's a different vendor's name in there. And it's the same contract that was posted on Board Docs for those services.
So I'm just, I'm still confused because I don't, I don't understand how we can approve and move forward a contract that hasn't been voted on by the board for approval.
This.
It just, it just seems like this is very unusual. I've never seen this before, and I want to see and understand how and why is this occurring in this fashion when this is not the process that I've seen for contracts for any type of services for the board in the past.
And, and this, this Board Member Ahmed, you haven't seen this because evidently policies had not been appropriately followed in securing of the, uh, reviewing the contract that was posted on Board Docs that you and other board members approved of at your, at the April 28 meeting. That was the same contract that was submitted to the, um, the procurement office. And if you need further explanation, is Mr. Keith Stewart on today? Anyway, the contract was under, uh, the $25,000 amount that for services. And all of that was explained to the vice chair and the chair relative to the procurement office procuring those services and signing off on them. And this contract is under that $25,000 dollar sign. He can explain it further, uh, if you needed, but it did not, excuse me, I didn't interrupt you. Let me finish.
Yeah, well, you gave me the floor, so I would like to continue.
But it, it, you, you should not interrupt her in the middle of a, of a sentence, so just be patient.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt in the middle of the sentence, but I would also feel more comfortable modeling that if I saw that happen with other board members as well. With Mr. Stewart, I think, um, I think the question that I have is it, isn't the, the person that is leading a specific office, the chief of staff, the executive director, aren't they the folks that are supposed to, if there's typically in the system, aren't they the ones that sign off or, or on contracts? I, I just don't, I don't understand how, um, how, who, how procurement as an office could sign off, um, and, and approve a contract for a different department? Without that, different departments had also signing off on that.
So the, the procurement process is, um, complex and varied. It is dependent on characteristics of that contract, the services that are needed, and the value of the contract. Under the procurement law and the procurement procedures used by the PGCPs school system, there are several opportunities when procurement signs off on contracts on their own. And being that this contract is under 25,000, that is the, that gives them the authority to sign off on the contract. What has occurred is they have reviewed the contract to, um, make sure that it was legally sufficient. There were some minor changes made to, um, the previous contract, and with that stated, they were able to sign off on that contract. And also in light of the, the goal to be able to have legal, um, counsel onboard as quickly as possible, board leadership in the facilitation of the work of the board proceeded with the most expeditious route as possible to have legal counsel onboard.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. My question was directed to Mr. Stewart. Mr. Stewart, could you please explain to me how it's possible for, uh, this process, uh, to occur in the way that it has? Because I'm not understanding. Even though I know Ms. Williams and Dr. Chair, Dr. Miller have tried to explain this to me, I'm still not understanding.
I guess, guess I will, ma'am. Um, from, from the purchasing side, we, we received a request to procure interim legal services. Had a, a statement of work which we provided to the, the, um, selected vendor and, uh, worked with the selected vendor to get, uh, pricing, um, for the, for the services rendered. Um, and at which time, once we got that back, we reviewed the, uh, statement of work, seeing if, if the vendor had any changes, which they did not. We added a couple, um, a ceiling price to the contract. And under my authority that's delegated from down from Dr. Golson, I was able to sign the contract.
Okay, I, uh, thank you for explaining that process. I will pause now for, I, I think I've spoken a lot, so let me leave other questions for other folks. Thanks.
Mr. Board Member Burrows, I saw your hand next.
Thank you. As a matter of the record, I'd like to read from the motion that passed. The motion was to meet with potential legal counsel, void the existing contract that is out on the street, meet procurement to develop a proper contract, call a special meeting to vote on the proper contract, and to do so within a two-week time period, so we can have legal counsel as soon as possible. The motion that passed two weeks ago was to bring a contract to the board for a vote. What the board leadership has done in this case is contrary to what the board did. Because in that motion that passed, it said that the purpose of this special meeting would devote on a proper contract. And I see the appointed vice chair shaking her head, no, but I'm quoting directly from the motion that was passed. I think it's very insulting to, uh, this board to not, um, for this process to have taken place this way. Our question is legitimacy. I'm disappointed administration, frankly, uh, for this attempt to, uh, circumvent the will of the majority of the board, uh, to assign legal counsel that we've never heard of, we've never seen. And so I just wanted to say that for the record, I'm very disappointed in this administration, uh, for their role in this.
Thank you, Board Member Burrows. Were you finished? Uh, Board Member, Board Member Murray, I saw your hand next.
I saw, um, Ms. Queen's hand next that I can watch here.
I don't, I don't see Ms. Queen.
I'm sorry, you can't see my face because I'm driving.
Okay, okay, this Board Member Queen, did you have a comment?
Yes, I do have a comment. Um, and really is a question directed at you, at you, Madam Chair. I remember recently, um, seeing an email saying that we was, we, our counsel was still our counsel, that Mr. Thomas was no longer going to be the counselor, but the firm was still going to work for us until the end of June. So now I'm wondering what made this change come in, unfortunately, because I didn't know that. And as a board member, I'm reaching out to the other firm thinking they are counselor to me, which is insulting. And now I'm hearing, you know, through this meeting that we have another counselor.
I'm, I'll let Mr. Stewart reiterate. You're talking two different things, mister, uh, in, in initiating this process with procurement. It was discovered, or Mr. Stewart clarified that even though the, Mr. Roger Thomas resigned at effective May 4, the board did not notify purchasing or procurement that the contract was inactive. Therefore, the contract was still active. In the need to have the appeals that the state has mandated readdressed by May 28, with that, Mr. Thomas was asked to come back to address appeals and appeals only. In the meantime, uh, Board Member or Vice Chair Williams and I have been, uh, negotiating or working through procurement in terms of getting an interim, um, law firm. Mr. Stewart, would you like to add to that?
Um, yes, Madam Chair, that's exactly what happened when we were notified that, um, of the appeals and, um, and the, uh, Mr. Thomas's contract came up. You know, I researched the contract and found out that we not, we never terminated the contract, and that was the information that I passed on. Therefore, he was still legally under contract, uh, binding contract with the, uh, with PGCPs. Um, and, um, so you're at, you know, you still have the ability to use him for appeals and whatever legal services that you deem necessary until such time as you all submit me a, a memo stating that you want to terminate his services.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Uh, Board Member.
Thank you.
Oh, well, you threw, Miss, I apologize.
Yes, I'm, I'm, yes, I'm through. That was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Board Member Murray.
Thank you. Um, I won't spend too much time pointing out the obvious things, namely, the board leadership didn't follow in any way, shape, or form the motion that was passed by the board. Didn't get the proper contract that was supposed to be drafted by procurement, by the Pugh Law Group, as directed by the board. I would like to clarify, I think we're all clear on the fact that administration can sign contracts under 25,000 that cannot assign us. And so they may have added another attorney that can assist, Dr. President of the Administration. They cannot assign us a board attorney. That person will not be recognized as the board attorney. That won't require seven votes. Madam Chair, it'd be more productive if, instead of trying to circumvent the will of the majority, you would work with your colleagues to get a majority, because that's not legislative bodies' work. So I just wanted to reiterate that this lawyer cannot be assigned to the board, and they are not the board counsel.
Thank you for your comment. The next one up is, uh, Board Member Burrows.
My question is to Mr. Stewart. Mrs. Stewart, what authority do you have to sign a contract to determine who the Board Legal Counsel is?
Uh, Mr. Bur, um, Mr. Burrows, I, I can, I can, I have the authority, uh, that has been delegated to me as a director of procurement from, the, the CEO to sign contracts. And, and so that gives, that gave me, provides me the authority, the requirement, uh, that, uh, the, the legal services requirement. I still, I have the ability to sign that as well. We signed the one, um, for Roger Thomas, uh, that we current, that's currently in place. So all the legal counsel, legal services contracts have come through the, the procurement office, so.
Mr. Stewart, are you aware that when we voted on the contract with Mr. Roger Thomas, the board voted on that uh, before you signed it? Are you, are you aware of that fact?
Um, I'm, I'm aware of the fact that it, it, uh, it came.
I mean, so I'm asking you, I'm asking you a very specific question.
Oh, I was not, I was not here for the Roger Thomas award. No, sir.
So you were not aware that the board voted to approve that contract?
No, sir.
Got it. Is there anywhere under policy that you can cite that gives you or this administration the authority to assign board, uh, legal counsel?
Let me clarify something. Excuse me, Mr. Stewart. This, this law firm was recommended.
By who?
Members.
By who?
May I finish? May I finish?
I believe Board Member Rivera has had the floor. He was in the middle of one of the questions, Board Member Rivera.
I, I was. Thank you so much, Mr. Murray.
So who's running this meeting?
Well, you, you just delegated him the floor. When he's on the floor, then I'll back to you.
I would like to call everyone to order. I mean, um, if everyone will allow Mr. Burrows, who's on his last round for, for, uh, comments, to finish his comments so that we can continue and move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Mr. Stewart, what authority under policy do you have to assign the board a legal, uh, counsel absent a vote of the board? Is what I'm trying to figure out. Did, did you select this law firm?
Uh, no, sir. I don't, um, purchasing does not assign, um, legal counsel. We write contracts to support, uh, with, whatever department requires our support and requires contractor support.
Who, who directed you to sign this contract?
Directed me or who had the requirement? The requirement came from the board or from, uh,
The board chair.
The vice chair.
Board Member Williams.
Uh, and, and were you under the impression, sir, at the time that you signed this contract, that it was from the Board of Education?
Was I, was I?
Were you, were you under the impression at the time that you signed this contract that you were signing it on behalf?
I, I was, I wrote a contract. I, I wrote a contract for interim legal support.
No, I guess my question is, at the time where you, when you signed the contract, were you under the impression that you were assigning the contract at the request of the Board of Education?
I was providing interim legal support. I, that's what I.
No, I, I, no, I, I understand that, and you know, I completely understand.
And, and then the customer is the Board of Education, so the answer to is, is yes, I guess, because that's the customer. So, but, but it was interim legal support. That was my role was to put a contract in place for interim legal support.
And I'd just like to say.
Thank you. Excuse me, Board Member Burrows, your time is up.
But I was also cut off, Madam Chair, and.
By whom?
Madam Chair, the vice chair had to bring the body to order in the middle of my remarks, and so I should be able to conclude my sentence because.
Please conclude your sentence.
Thank you. I would like to state for the record that the record, that the director of procurement stated at the time that he signed the contract, he believed that he was signing it.
It's not what he said.
By the board. And the board has not directed you to do that, sir.
Uh, the next hand up is Mr. Tom, uh, Board Member Thomas.
Um, Madam Vice Chair, is there anyone else, um, after me? Because I'd be down to, I'm not, I'm about to just switch to my laptop, and that would be much easier for me. If there is anyone else next, um, they can go ahead of me.
Sure. Uh, Board Members Taylor.
Yes, um, I'm, uh, concerned that we're just finding out about this firm right now. Was any of this information posted to Board Docs?
No, we received the signed contract today, the fully executed contract today.
So, uh, to the vice chair and to the chair, how, how do you expect us to make a decision on? Or how do you expect us to sort of go forward with this decision having no information prior to right now, this public meeting?
Ms. But Board Member Williams, let me inject this. Uh, because there's, there appears to be a lot of, of, um, discernment in terms of how this contract came about. As I indicated earlier, that this is the same contract that the board members at the April 28 voted on and posted on Board Docs. So it is not a new contract. Well, it's a new contract. The content is basically the same with, uh, a, a minimum of $24,990, uh, to be spent on this contract. The law firm was one of several that have, uh, we looked at in terms of what co, company or co, uh, firm could provide the services that this board needs, which includes parliamentary procedures and experience, working with boards, et cetera. And so this was the firm that was recommended to purchasing, to go through with this. Now, I'm really concerned that we're having a lot of discussion about what, how this contract came about and how we found a, um, found a, um, a law firm, when in fact, the group of, uh, elected board members on April 28, and it's still, that meeting is still under question and legal review. Okay, that's one thing that the public needs to know as well. And that, at that meeting, the, uh, the seven members of the board voted on a, um, a, a firm. That was those members at that meeting that brought that contractor to the table. It was never announced prior to that.
So I, I was not actually finished with my comment here. I was just.
Well, I didn't know.
Question. It's, it's.
I thought I was clarifying it for you.
Sure, thank you. Um, so I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that. So I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that I understand what's happening here. So you're telling us that you have circumvented what was already voted on and hired a lawyer through the administration?
I have not circumvented anything. I have followed the procedures that were not followed by the group that voted on the initial contractor. So to say that I circumvented, no, that group circumvented the process. And that is why we were
But that, but that process went through all of the appropriate procedures as well. This is, this is the interesting part to me that, you know, we're expected to come here today and you've already made a decision. You've made a decision working, and we've never, we haven't taken a vote on anything. But you made a decision. I'm just going to go ahead and give to Board Member Amid.
Can I, can I make a point of
Yes, Board Member Williams.
I think it was stated in the opening statement that you provided that the Pew Law Group has requested to be withdrawn from consideration. And for clarification, what I specifically said at the last meeting was that we will meet with the Pew Law Group and sign a contract with legal services within 14 days, two weeks. And that is what we had done.
That's not a question for Ms. Williams.
Please. I have not acknowledged either one of you. Please mute all people except those of us who are speaking. Ms. Williams and Ms. Berkeley. I will recognize when it's time for a board member or for audience participation. We're not going to have this cutting in and out of conversations. If you have something to say, raise your hand, put your hand up. And we will operate that way. Not going to conduct ourselves in the manner of being disrespectful and rude to each other. Now, Ms. Board Member Shayla Adams Stafford, did you finish with your questioning?
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to my initial question about the information regarding this firm. I know that the record will show that for the previous lawyer that was voted on, that information was available on Board Docs prior to that meeting. And this information wasn't. And I mean, I'm just trying to understand, how, how can you expect people to understand or not, how can you expect us to not have questions when there's no information provided? And that's, information is being hoarded and then you're basically just telling us what you've done. That's when you, we ask a lot for professional courtesy here. I don't think that that's extending professional courtesy to, to your colleagues. And so that's, that's just my point here.
Thank you. Board Member Amid.
Actually, Dr. Miller, if I may, yeah.
I was going to say, Dr. Miller, I have my hand raised. I am, I'm wanting to speak, but I think Mr. Thomas was just waiting to get on his laptop. So I can wait until he is
Okay, thank you. Board Member Thomas.
Thank you. So, you know, I'm going to be very intentionally respectful in my remarks. I'm going to be conscious of that. If I could first just ask everyone to mute because I personally will not be interrupted. I will not accept it or allow it. So if I can just make sure that everyone, before I continue with my remarks, is clear about that. If I'm interrupted, I'm not going to stop and I, I would do the same for you. So I won't be interrupting anybody else. Okay. So first, I just have a quick question for Mr. Stewart. I actually want to repeat somewhat of Mr. Burrows' question because I, I think I was understanding his line of questioning. When you were, when you, when you, Mr. Stewart, signed that contract, I understand that this is a role that you play in signing these contracts. But were you, were you under the impression that you were doing so at the request of the board? At the request of the Board of Education?
My, my user, I, Sonia Williams was my end user. So I was supporting her request, the request of Sonia Williams. She was working on my other procurement as well, so.
Okay. So at the direction of the Vice Chair of the Board, not as, at the direction of the Board of Education?
Yeah, she was my customer, correct.
Correct. And so my question, really that, it's not to you. I guess this is just to the public to consider, to other colleagues to consider is, does the Vice Chair of the Board have the authority to direct procurement to sign contracts at at his or her own will? My understanding is no. However, I see Ms. Williams is saying yes. And so whenever it is your turn, you can feel free to share. Although I would really love to hear someone who actually is a credible source give the answer. Anyways, that being stated, I want to make, I want to make it clear to the public. This is for the public to know that I have made numerous attempts to connect with board leadership. They're both, both the Vice Chair and the Chair are sitting here. There are numerous examples of attempts of me making outreach to try to work with board leadership. Simple, simple text messages that have requested wanting to work together and get additional context, understanding the amount of conflict that we've had over the past several weeks. So I know the public, you all see it, us board colleagues, we all see it. And I just want to make sure the public knows that I've made those attempts and I've received zero response from board leadership, zero. So I want to make that very clear. I want, I want that to be public. I don't even have a question to board leadership as to why you haven't responded. Just want folks to know that I have done that. I recognize how much turmoil this board has been in. I've made a very intentional effort to try to reach out and I have been ignored in my attempts. I want to also point out to the public that the Pew Law Group has withdrawn as a result of poor, poor leadership by, on this board. There is a very clear reason why the Pew Law Group withdrew from this process. And for Ms. Adam Stafford's remarks about how, you know, I know Ms. Williams always talks about process and informing board members. Yet in this case, no informing was needed. No, no working collaboratively was needed. It was just some executive decisions that were made unilaterally. So I want to just be very, very clear for the public and this would be the end of my remarks. Let's be really clear about how bodies are governed, okay? Of course, we all play a role in working together. But let's remember that leadership actually sets the tone for how bodies are governed and how bodies are run. I am very, very disappointed that the leadership of this board chooses to ignore the will and just the actual relevance and, and, and presence of the majority of this board. That is not how we work together for kids. That is not how we get things done for our schools and our students. And it continues to show a, a, a clear position that there is no interest in working with all board members. There is an interest in having complete control and not working together, not working collaboratively. And until you, until anyone can respond to my messages, I, I will only think as much. And so I want the public to know, I am making my, my attempts to try to piece this together. But board leadership, appointed board leadership is choosing to ignore and not work collaboratively. That's disappointing and this is not what our kids deserve. Thank you.
Madam Chair, you're muted. Would you please unmute yourself?
I believe Ms. Amid was next, by the way. So I don't think there's an opportunity for the chair to respond.
Thank you very much. You've used your time.
There is no opportunity for her to respond. I was not asking the question. I was not asking the question.
Time and I was giving direction to the facilitator of the board work, which is the board chair.
But let's make sure he does not have a chance to respond. It goes to Ms. Amid next. No, no more responses from the chair. She does not get to do this.
Excuse me. Excuse me. It is the board chair's responsibility to facilitate the work of the board.
She should
And as such, excuse me. And as such, she is the one who facilitates this meeting. I was letting her know, as everyone could see, that she was muted. And as you normally do, interrupt people speaking and everyone was quiet when you spoke. I was letting the board chair know that she was speaking, but she was muting, muted. So Madam Board Chair, the floor is yours to facilitate this meeting.
I'd like to make a comment to the public in reference to some statements that were made.
There are other people in the queue, Madam Chair. This is not right. There are other people there are other people in the queue. Please call the next person. You do not get a chance to respond. There are other people in the queue. You do not get a chance to
As I indicated, and I will make a statement to the public that the effort of this chair and the Vice Chair as leadership is to correct a lot of actions resulting from that April 28th meeting that could have put the Board of Education in a liableless position. Therefore, it is my fiduciary responsibility of the Chair and Vice Chair to work together to resolve some of those issues. Currently, this board has been faced with several violations from, first with the Open Meetings Act to start off with. So with this kind of conduct by certain board, elected board members, this, it becomes necessary to it becomes necessary to overrule some of these actions that, I won't say overrule. Maybe that's not the correct term. But it is necessary to correct some of these actions that are being taken by, quote, this majority and to preserve the image and integrity of this board. Now, if it's, if it's because some people, some board members feel that a decision was made by an executive, a decision had to be made to preserve the integrity of this board, then so be it. But that is what is taking place. And the, I mean, the board, the public has seen how some things have gone on at these board meetings. We talk about respect and disrespect. But one thing I'm going to mention right now, it's very interesting that certain board members are questioning the action of the Chair and moving forward with trying to preserve the integrity of this, an image of this board. But no one, none of them mentioned the action that was taken on April 28th by seven elected board members. And that board meeting has, is under question. A, and when I say under question
This fourth meeting is under question as well.
Why am I, why, why is, why is Mr. Burrows speaking over me?
Because you are out of order, Madam Chair.
No, I am not.
People in the queue, Madam Chair. You're talking for three minutes. There's other people in the queue. How is this, how is this appropriate facilitation?
Would you please mute these board members who are
Not muting me. How was this?
This is the conduct that we as leadership have to deal with. And it is embarrassing to this board. And the actions that some of the board members have taken are, are becoming quite troublesome to the public as well as to this leadership. So to tell me what I can and cannot say, that's one thing. But I took the same oath that the seven majority and other board members took. And I intend to adhere to that.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
The next person up is Amid.
Thank you.
Thank you. There was a number of different things that I wanted to say and then maybe a question at the end. There are a couple of things that were being said by different members of the board. And I just wanted to clarify to the public the position that, that I understand to be true on a couple of these items. One of the statements that was said was that this is the same contract as what was before the board before. I want to reiterate that this is not the same contract. This is a different contract because it's being awarded to somebody else. And you can't say that it's one, this is, this is the contract if it's being awarded to somebody else. Those are two different contracts if they're being awarded to two different people. I also wanted to note, I know that the Chair of the Board just asked about, Noah was talking about the April 28th meeting. Members of the public, you can go back, you can view the meeting and see what was stated at the beginning of the meeting to justify why we were meeting and what was the purpose and what was the rationale for meeting in the way that we did. And so folks, feel free to go there and, and make your own opinion as, as it relates to that. I also wanted to reiterate that the, the contract that came before the board on the 28th and on the 12th of May was reviewed for legal sufficiency by administration. And it's very convenient that there are no lawyers on this call to be able to to, to talk to that, to speak to that. And, and I wonder, that's, that's kind of curious to me. I also wanted to reiterate, I know Mr. Burrows had said it before, what the motion was at our May 12th meeting as it relates to this item. The motion was, and you can see this on YouTube, all of our meetings, board meetings are recorded on YouTube. You can see there, go to the three hour mark and you'll see the motion is meet with potential legal counsel, void the existing contract that is out on the street, meet with procurement to develop a proper contract, call a special meeting to vote on the proper contract and do this within the next two weeks so we can have legal counsel as soon as possible. The motion literally said a special meeting to vote on the contract. We are meeting today, but we are not voting on a contract. I'm wondering, could this not have been done via email? Could a notification not have gone out to the board via email about this is what the leadership is doing? I think the reason that we're meeting today is to be able to provide a platform for board leadership to explain their side of the situation and to challenge very many other board members on this board about what is going on. I really feel like if we're trying to work together and make sure that we're operating as a body, we shouldn't be having meetings where we're just talking or talking about situations and talking about items and not voting on those items or talking about those items that you know are going to be controversial, that you know that there's two different viewpoints. We could have had this all in an email. Also, there's one other thing I would like to say.
Hi, Ms. Amid.
Sure, just a point of order or a point of clarification. Board Policy 9270 says, "Board members shall have no authority to compel action in the name of the Board of Education unless the action has been previously approved by formal board resolution." How can the board leadership, how can the Chair and Vice Chair compel procurement to hire counsel for the board? That is our policy.
Have you finished? Board Member Queen. Unmute. Board Member Staff. Are you saying no, Ms. Board Member Queen?
I had to wait till the host unmuted me. Which I don't know why, but anyway, thank you so very much, Madam Chair, lady. As many of the board members and you all know, I mean, it's kind of, it's kind of hard for me to even understand, especially that it wasn't posted on Board Docs. But I am understanding the fact that I heard, and I believe it was Board Member Williams, that it's going off of what was already done, which apparently of what was already done with the seven board members for that meeting that I keep hearing that not a good meeting, it shouldn't have been done, but it's still being done off of what was done at that meeting that should not have been done in the contract went forth. I, I get that and I understand that. I understand the fact that Ms. Pew's law, she put her name back. And we, we do need representation. We need a side of the arm and a whole lot of other things at this meeting you guys can see. As you can see, we need that. It's just that, Mr. Harris, my question is to you. As I sit here and listen to some of these things, are you really ready for this? That's what I'm saying to myself. You know, I mean, Mr. Stewart, are you really ready for this? And as I look at, do you know the answer to some of these questions? Because I see questions that's being brought up and I see where board members are not understanding whether this is legal and whether it's not. And then for us to say, hey, well, not us, I'll cheer and I vice cheer. Who is the chair? And who is the board leadership that's saying, hey, this is going to be our new attorney. This is who we choosing from the contract, because you guys already did. But I just want to know, Mr. Stewart, is this something really you can handle? When I really don't even see you answering the question and saying, where is this okay in the policy? Where is it not okay in the policy on internet? So I'm, I'm, I'm concerned as a board member who sometimes don't know it all. And so when I am unsure whether, okay, can they do this? Okay, maybe they can do this. Okay, what policy is it in? So then sometime I want to, you know, lean on you as our board attorney. But I, I don't, I see you just sitting back. So I'm wondering, are you really ready for this, Mr. Stewart? That's all I have to say.
Just a point of clarification. Mr. Stewart is the Director of the Prince George's County Public Schools Procurement and Purchasing Office. He's not the legal attorney. He's the procurement officer. The legal attorney is not, we do not have any attorneys on this meeting other than our Board Member Montero. other than our board member Montero.
Okay, so are we going to have any legal attorneys to be able to answer any of these questions? So I mean, then having Mr. Stewart here as procurement, I mean, may seem fun to you guys, but right now in all reality, with what we're going through, we need attorney. We need someone legal. We need someone who can do guidance when it comes to sergeant of arms with things we're doing. We as a board, and that was one of the things. Vice Chair, remember at the last meeting, one of the things I said, okay, we will come back in two weeks. We need an attorney. I just, we just need somebody to give us guidance. That's all.
May I respond to that?
May I? Well, let me just give a point of reference, too. We were without legal counsel, especially after the Pew Group decline. And then when we found out about the Roger Thomas's contract still being active, Mr. Thomas agreed to come on just to complete those appeals for which he was the attorney on record for those appeals. He clearly stated, and I and I believe he put it in writing to me as well, that he did not wish to participate in any board meetings. Therefore, he's only serving the purpose of completing those appeals. Now, we only have two more meetings in June. And we have, we still without legal counsel, a temporary. And I don't know whether this is clear to everyone, but this is just a temporary contract for through the month of June. And hopefully, we will have be selecting permanent legal counsel between now and June. The RFP has been put out there. And Board Member Williams can speak to that RFP after I call on the people in the pew. I mean, in the in the queue. Board Member Thomas.
Or Madam Chair. Board Member Adam Stafford is in front of Board Member Thomas.
Okay, I saw. Okay, thank you.
Yes, so I'd like to read for the public, I'm talking to you right now, about the bylaws of the board. It literally says, "Board members shall have no authority to compel action in the name of the Board of Education unless it has been previously approved by the board through a formal board resolution." It goes on to say, "Individual board members do not have any administrative control or rights of command and supervision over employees over the Board of Education." "The board will not be bound in any way by a statement or action on the part of any individual board member." So, Mr. Stewart, you mentioned earlier that you did this work because you were under the impression that Sonia Williams, you you said this, that you were being compelled by her to do this. And we can run the tape back and you answered that several times. And this is what I'm concerned about, is a continued pattern of bullying and harassment of board leadership, of board office. Please don't laugh at me while I'm talking. And that's, you see that? That's another example. While members are talking, continue to laugh, continue to mute them. This is a constant pattern. If you were unhappy, I just want to make another distinction. The board meeting that happened on April twenty eighth that was allegedly illegal, that that meeting had documents posted for the public so that you could read and understand what we were voting on. This meeting that we're having right now, we are just, we're finding out with you, with the public, who who has been already, who has been hired. We have no information. And mind you, this board leadership denies members of the Board of Education opportunities to put agenda items for the public to learn about because they don't follow the protocol of posting things to board docs. So it's just another example that we're we're trying to, I'm happy we're having this meeting that as Board Member Ahmed correctly stated, if you had already made a decision and you didn't require a board vote and you weren't going to take a vote today, the purpose of this meeting was for a personal, I guess, press release on how you wanted to sort of stir up the drama and division. So I just, I hope that the public is listening and can see the distinction here. We're not being treated as professional colleagues. We're not given the same courtesies. And it's an ongoing, continued example of bullying and harassment of board leadership on board staff. And there's lots of documentation of that.
Have you finished Board Member Stafford? The next hand is Board Member Thomas.
Well, I'll first just apologize for raising my voice. As you can see, I'm getting quite passionate over here because of what is what is happening is just plain wrong. So I do want to just apologize to the public for raising my voice. But I also wanted to be noted that when I was called upon by the chair just now, I didn't even have the opportunity to unmute myself. Because now, board leadership, who is controlling this Zoom meeting, has now made it, just as for the public's information, that we have to get their permission to be able to unmute ourselves. Now, what's extremely problematic is, see, I'm very much in favor of keeping this meeting in order. Where this becomes extremely problematic is the chair and the vice chair continue to speak over other board members. They continue to laugh during other board members' remarks. Ms. Williams, the the table show that you just did it. And so this is what is wrong. This is plain wrong. As Ms. Adam Stafford said, we are not being treated as professional colleagues. So it is it is highly unacceptable to me that I the chair has called my name and I can't unmute myself until whoever is facilitating this Zoom call decides that I'm able to come off of mute. Yet 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 those same individuals are able to speak over others, cut off others. This is highly problematic. And I also want to just add, the reason why this, I think, happened in the first place was because the chair, as as happens in every meeting, thinks that there is an opportunity for her to respond whenever is appropriate and cut in front of the queue, in front of others that have been waiting in line to speak. I have been on this board for two and a half years, and until this new chair has come in, I have never seen this happen. So all I know is what I've experienced before, in which we all wait in turn, we wait in line, and we follow an order. The chair does not get to respond to everything, any set of comments that is made by any any board member. Now, if I have questions for the chair, that's different. But the chair does not just get to have a response back and forth conversation. So I need the public to understand that this looks really messy. I I am very aware of how messy this looks. But I cannot sit in good faith, sit quietly while I watch people abusing their positions of power, treating treating colleagues in an unprofessional manner. And so unfortunately, it is it is looking messy on my part. But I feel very much so validated in why I am raising these causes. So when I finish my remarks, there is a good chance the chair may try to respond again. But that's inappropriate because I see Mr. Valentine's hand is up. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. And again, for the public, for the public to know, of course, we all play a role in working together. But it starts at the top with leadership, and I want everybody to be very aware that leadership has a role to unify in times of 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 conflict. Where in a moment like this, where we have had weeks and weeks and months of ongoing conflict, it is the the role of leaders. This is what leaders do. Leaders unify, and I will finish my sentence by saying leaders unify. This board leadership is not doing that. I want the county executive to see it, and I want the public to see it. That is not happening. There is not an attempt to work with other board members, and that's a shame.
Board Member Valentine, you're next.
Thank, can you all hear me? Just wanted to make.
Yes.
I just want to say, I've been quiet throughout this, and I didn't want anyone to take my silence for lack of interest or passion for this issue any more than a colleague that you've heard. But I've been on this board for eight years, and I have tried every day as member of this board to conduct myself in a way that identifies that there are issues that we have, and we've had a number of issues over the last eight years. But to find ways to move forward. And I just want to comment on something my colleague Joshua Thomas mentioned. And just to just to say publicly, he knows this, he and I have sat down, and we've had a very long conversation that was productive. It was respectful. It was solution oriented and driven. And I'm committed to continue to do that. I want to commit. I'm sorry, I think I got my translation going on the same time. I also want to commend my board colleague Sheila Adam Stafford for leadership of a committee on which we sit and the passion she brings, how prepared she is to run those meetings. And I'm committed to work with every one of my colleagues. Because to to Brother Joshua Thomas's point, as messy as it looks, it feels even worse. And I don't come to this, this is not, in many ways, those of us who are running are pointing, we're voluntary. These are things that we come to, and there's time we take away from our children, our families, especially when you have emergency meetings like tonight. But we don't do that for anything other than the fact that my children are students in the system. And I've I dedicated my life to this community because I love it so much. And so I want to say publicly that I'm committed to work with every member of this board, and I believe Brother Thomas and I will continue to have conversations and continue to come together to identify solutions. This contract is but, this conversation on both contracts is but a tip of an iceberg of a larger conversation we have to have as as members of a board, as citizens of Prince George's County, as leaders, for people who are looking to us. And let me just say this. The most disappointing part of a lot of the conversations we have is I just know the potential of all of us. I know exactly what you do for a living, Brother Thomas, Adam Stafford, Ahmed, Burrows, Boozer Strutter. I know what you all do when you're not on the board. You all are leaders in your community and the work that you do. I want to congratulate you, Brother Thomas, on your recent promotion and others who've done this work because we are the best this county has to offer in our skill set. Period. There's no one, there's no better fourteen members of this county who are geared to address the educational issues of our district. Period. The question is, can we come together as individuals for the better of our citizens? I believe we can. And the minute I believe we can't, I will remove myself from this board as quickly as you can say, Curtis Valentine. And so I'm still committed, I still believe. You call me, I will meet with you. I will meet you halfway as Brother Thomas and I did. But this is, we are better than this. And I will continue to work with my committee members, my committee chair, every member of this board to make sure this has never happened again. Thank you.
Are there more comments? Oh, I see another hand, Mr. Burnett. Mr. Burnett.
Yes, thank you, Chair Miller. I I asked Mr. Stewart to leave honestly because he's part of the administration and, you know, I felt that he was unfairly a a target here. You know, we, as an administration, you know, are here. And and I've served with ten different CEOs and superintendents. And Dr. Golson has has brought on the best executive team that I've ever served with. And this goes back forty years. A lot of friends out there who were CEOs and superintendents. So we are primed to do and continue to do wonderful things for students. And, you know, with Mr. Stewart actually took action just as he would have on the first contract with Ms. Pew. So he received, you know, a contract and he took action, you know, with it on behalf of the board. So I don't want him as the target here because we're here to serve the needs of a hundred thirty four thousand students, twenty two thousand employees, and the Board of Education, all of the members, so that you can successfully, you know, lead us, you know, in 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 the right direction with students. So certainly, you know, we're here, you know, to serve and to do the right thing for all of you and for all of our students. And as I said, you have a fantastic executive team with Dr. Golson, who's actually a a speaker at a graduation at this particular time, and that's why I'm here. Thank you for giving me the floor, Chair Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Chair, Vice Chair.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Because I'm still at the board office at this moment in time because of my commitment to serve this community. And I just wanted to sort of clarify my position on the work that we do as as an elected board member. Because I am an elected board member, I represent the dynamic District Nine, and I'm very proud of that. But additionally, I was asked to do additional work to be the vice chair and assist the chair in facilitating the work of this board. As everyone knows, she was, Madam Chair, was brought on board in January, in the middle of the school year, in the middle of a pandemic, in the middle of budget season. And the first request that she made was to allow her an opportunity to get acclimated to the board. Yes, she she is a retiree of the Prince George's County Public School System, so she's familiar with PG CPS. However, as the chair of the board, there was some unfamiliarity with that. And she asked the board members to allow her professional courtesy to get acclimated. And the response was no. And then a number of actions were taken that circumvented her authority and power. And so I stepped in to help her get acclimated. And it was a heavy lift, and it continues to be a heavy lift, which is why I'm at the SASSA building tonight at six P M. And been here since eight thirty this morning. And so I would like everyone to understand that, yes, we welcome the opportunity to work with the entire board. However, circumstances continue to arise that limits that ability. And then what is seen on camera is all of what is bubbling up in the background. And I do apologize for the community to have to experience this. And so with that said, I will continue to do the job representing District Nine and the work that I've been asked to do as the vice chair of this board. And I welcome the the ability to work with all board members for the rest of the tenure that I and they will be on this board. So with that said, Madam Chair, I think that we have finished the first and second rounds. And if you would like, you can begin to end the meeting.
Well, I'd like to, well, you said we've finished the second rounds. There is a hand up. And I want to give every board member an opportunity to speak before closing. So with that, Mr. Borough, Board Member Burrows.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Close with your with your statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is for Mr. Burnett. Mr. Burnett, and actually, I do want to acknowledge and give value to what Mr. Valentine said. So I do want to uplift that in that spirit and tone. It was an important moment of your leadership just now, so I recognize that. My my question is to Mr. Burnett. Mr. Burnett, you mentioned that procurement would have signed the contract of Ms. Pew as well. So, you know, procurement was no respecter of of attorney. Ultimately, they signed the one that the vice chair asked them to sign. Is that correct? I I can't hear you.
Burnett.
Yes, he received, he he received.
You're muted again, Mr. Burnett. Thank you. There you go.
Sorry about that. Mr. Stewart and 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 his office received the contract, you know, from the from the board vice chair to to sign.
So my my next question to Mr. Burnett is, if this board via a vote of the majority, like most democracy board, sent, you know, convene a special meeting and voted on a contract, we could then forward that to the superintendent to have Mr. Stewart sign?
As I stated, Mr. Mr. Stewart would have signed the contract for Ms. Pew had he had he received it at the time. I think what what's important for the board is to have legal counsel present at their meetings so that we can ascertain that the actions of the board are in line with both the board's policies and procedures and the administration's policies and procedures.
Absolutely. I couldn't agree with you more. I guess it would be helpful to have it. It would be helpful to have it articulated process so that the process is not shifting day by day, week by week. And so, um. And that's why I asked you the question, and it, and just to summarize, if you could succinctly say what is needed? For procurement to sign a legal services contract from the board? Is it the fact that the board can meet, um, vote on a contract and then? Direct procurement to sign it? Sh- should it be the board meets and, um, ask pre- You know, do we send you the contract ahead of time to have it vet through procurement? And then once the vet into procurement, then we vote on that piece? You know, it's so many things that are shifting that I, I want to. Hear the answer to that question.
Yes, and, and, and Mr. Burrows, you know, like I, like I do, that, that in, in, in normal instances. Um, a contract is forwarded to procurement for signature. And, um, and that contract is signed and, and it, and it moves forward. But I think that certainly it's incumbent upon all of us and, and, and the board, as I stated. To have legal counsel, you know, so that we can certainly make sure that we have all of the policies and procedures, you know, followed. You, you, along with, um, you know, other actions that are critical based on the needs of, um, of, of the students here. But what I will do for all board members is to send, you know, the documentation of what that process is that you've requested. So that we know what that process is based on policies and procedures that the board has and that the administration follows.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much, Mr. Burnett.
Uh, I'm going to recognize Board Member Murray, uh, Board Member Thomas, this is, uh, this would be your third round. But this would be Board Member Murray's second round. So I give him, um, the floor unless he wants. Board Member Murray? Well.
Thank you, no, I, I was muted, I was muted, thank you. Um, Mr. Um, Mr. Burnett, um, is this, are the funds for this legal contract coming out of the, the Board of Education's budget?
Mr. Burnett, unmute, he asked the question of you.
I, I thought you were, um, unmuting me. Yes, certainly, this is out of the board's, um, the, the board's budget for legal counsel.
Okay, I thought so, thank you. Can any one, one member of the board compel? I know there's a board policy about this, but just so it's clear, can any one board member compel the board? To enter and then pay for a contract without the approval of a majority of the board? Is, is that your, your understanding, Mr. Burnett?
Well, as, you know, as, as, as I stated, I need to certainly provide the, uh, the, the, the complete board with the policy. Policies and procedures which outline, um, procurement and, um, accessing, you know, services under twenty-five thousand dollars.
Right, so I guess I'm trying to understand, I mean, can, can one member of the board compel? The entire Board of Education to have to fulfill the financial obligations of this contract with taxpayer dollars? Is, is that what I'm understanding, one member can direct procurement and then this board will all, we will all have to pay for that?
I have the same response, uh, Mr. Murray, that, um, certainly I'll provide the, uh. Board's policies and procedures and the administration so that all board members, um, have that.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess my last question is because, you know, I'm, I'm pretty clear on, on the board policy that, that one board member cannot do so. So if that, the policy says that one board member cannot compel, it would require a majority vote to, for us to enter into this contract. Would the contract, would the administration then uphold this contract? If that's what the policy says, that, that one member cannot enter us into a contract, would the administration then obligate us and, and pay this contract going forward?
Again, after review of the policies and procedures that the board has and the policies and procedures that the administration has. Then, um, that determination would be made. And that's why I'm providing that information to the, uh, complete board after, you know, after this meeting, we'll, we'll.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, Mr. Burnett. I, and I'll just close with, I think it's important if those policies had been reviewed prior to signing a contract. Because, you know, I've been on the board a while and I've been following the board before I was on the board. And it's never been the practice for the administration to sign a contract that the board cannot go. And so next time, I think it would just make sense that those policies are reviewed prior to signing. Thank you, Mr. Burnett.
Thank you, board members. Uh, the, um, contract, which is in question by many of you, will be posted on board docs. And I'm going to extend, extend an apology that it was not posted because this information was provided. However, we had a change in staff, uh, leadership. And there were some changes that took place in the board office, which did not lend to getting this information to you in a timely manner. And it's unfortunate that there is, um. Well, it's unfortunate that it took the, uh, the, um, position, board members took the position tonight of, of opposition. To us getting temporary legal services because we don't have legal services at this time. And the executive decision had to be made to assure that we had exec, um, legal services on board as soon as possible. We did, uh, the, the Chair did, uh, explain to board members, the ration and a letter was, uh, email was sent to you. In terms of bringing, um, Mr. Thomas back on board to, uh, deal with these appeals for which he's on record as, uh, the attorney. The attorney of record. So, uh, the only thing I can say at this point in time is that the, uh, contract will be posted. And if there, given that there are numerous concerns, please document them and we will address them at our, um. I don't want to call another special meeting. So, uh, at some point, we can meet in small groups like we did before in terms of discussing the R F P for permanent contracts. And, uh, then our concern, register your concerns at that time. And in the meantime, um, I'm just going to ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting. So moved? Is there a second? Are you second, Mr. Mr. Thomas? Unmute, Mr. Thomas, please.
Um, yeah, I'm not, I was just in the queue, so I'm going to go ahead and, um, use this opportunity to just share some, some remarks as well. Um, first, I want to uplift, um, as Mr. Burrows did, the comments that were offered by Board Member Valentine. Um, I want to state that for the public, Board Member Valentine has been, uh, proactive along with me and working together to try to piece this together. I want the public to be able to know this so that you know where different board members' intentions are. The, the way in which we're working in good faith to be collaborative, to communicate, that's how we get things done. So I want to appreciate you for that, also want to appreciate Mr. Montero. And I'm going to continue to reach out to all board members to try to work, uh, together, um, to, to, to be able to resolve some of the issues and the dysfunction that's going on. Um, I want to just, you know, note again, Vice Chair Williams did say explicitly that she welcomes the opportunity to work collaboratively. She said that verbatim. Where's the responses to my messages then? That's not working collaboratively, okay? Uh, the same thing goes to the chair, where are the responses to my phone calls? That's not how you work collaboratively. And it has been a while since I've tried to call the chair. But the last two times that I made an attempt, I got no answer and I know, got no call back. So I want the public to know there, this, this is not looking good. I know that it, this, this looks messy, there's this narrative that this board doesn't work, this board is so dysfunctional. And there are even, you know, conversations around changing this entire board. There are board members who are making an attempt to be collaborative. And there are, there are other board members, specifically this board's leadership, that are putting a wall up to not allow for collaboration. And so the chair, uh, 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 says that it's disappointing that, um, all board. I'll finish, I'll finish this sentence, I'll finish this sentence. The chair says it's disappointing that this board does not want to move forward with a legal services contract because we don't have it. That is exactly what board leadership just did over the last several weeks. The chair says I've used two rounds, how many rounds?
Member Thomas, your time is up.
Nope, nope, how many rounds? How many chairs, rounds has the chair received?
Your time is up, you're being disrespectful. Um, Board Member Adam Stafford.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to clarify a couple of points. One of them is regarding debate with the chair, which I think would, you know, help if, if you would, uh. Just connect with some of what Robert Rules has to say around this. But the chair is not supposed to enter into debate without relinquishing the chair of the meeting. Um, and so I think that is a, a cause for a lot of the, the back and forth that we see. So I'm going to implore and ask Dr. Miller if you would please do that. Um, that would help us to maintain some order. And, you know, I just feel like, you know, the urgency with which this contract was signed. Um, i- it's, it's interesting, uh, hold on one second, sorry. My, my phone, it's giving, I just needed to pause my, my phone. Um, the, the urgency with which this contract was signed, uh, there was no information provided to the public. Uh, so even if you were, felt that it was within your right personally to sign this con- to push forward this contract without a vote of the board. No matter what you think about anything that has happened since you've become chair or in board leadership. We've always had a board meeting to vote on it and to give the public an opportunity to read the information. And so I, I just think that the, the tools that are being used to mute the voices of elected members like myself, like agenda setting. And creating, um, arbitrary deadlines and arbitrary policies and procedures, they're just not being followed. When it comes to, you know, alerting the public and giving people an opportunity to learn more about what you ventured into. And really the urgency around, there was no urgency to hire a lawyer until the April twenty-eighth meeting. That's why the majority of the board, realizing that we were going to be without a lawyer for our meeting, went ahead and held a meeting to which the chair did not attend. So if, if there was such an urgency around having a lawyer, why didn't you attend the meeting? Why didn't you come?
Thank you. Uh, is there a second on the floor to adjourn this meeting? Please unmute everybody, uh, Miss Berkeley. Is there a second? Miss, uh, Boozer Strutter, does that mean you're second?
I second.
Wow, yeah, now we unmuted. Now the chair is muted, we can't hear her.
Chair, you're muted. It has been moved and second that we adjourn tonight's meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call. Miss Berkeley, roll call.
Mrs. Adam Stafford?
I believe Mr. Burrows hands, hand was up, so I wanted to say nay so he could have a chance to speak.
Mrs. Ahmed?
She's muted.
She can unmute her.
I said for the same reason, no.
Thank you. Miss Boozer Strutter?
Yes.
Mr. Burrows? Mr. Harris?
No.
Miss Jackson?
For the same previously expressed reason, no.
Mr. Montero? Absent. Mr. Murray?
No.
Mrs. Queen?
I must say no, give my colleagues a chance to speak.
Mr. Thomas?
Same reason, no.
Mr. Valentine?
Believe he's left the meeting.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
And Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Three S's. Two absent.
So, thank you, Miss Berkeley. So we will continue discussion. I don't see any hands in the queue, okay, uh, Board Member Burrows, I see your hand.
Madam Chair, can you, uh, describe the contents of the contract? Uh, the, uh, the scope of work? Uh, can you also describe the termination clause specifically?
Uh, I can't, and I'm going to turn that over to, uh, and, uh, I'm going to turn it over to Board Women, Board Member Williams. Who has the procurement experience. And that is why I had asked her to follow up and follow through with making sure the, um, the, um, contract. Went through the appropriate channels.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are no changes from the previous contract that was formally prepared for the Pew Law Group. The only change that was made was the vendor and the, uh, the fact that they cannot exceed twenty-five thousand. Those are the only changes from what was made.
So, um, Mad, Mad Vice Chair, just that I understand, uh, the only changes, uh, from the Pew's. Pew, uh, law firm track that we voted on, on, uh, April the twenty-eighth. Is the name of the new lawyer and then the clause that says you cannot exceed twenty-five thousand, is that correct?
That is correct.
I just like to state for the record that there was a lot of, um, concern and contention that. The Pew law firm contract was not properly vetted by procurement. And here we are today with an admission that it's the exact same contract. Uh, just with a different company at a cap of twenty-five thousand. And the cap of twenty-five thousand is there apparently, uh, so that. Uh, the superintendent can, doesn't make someone to sign off on it without having to come before board approval. But the content itself is the same exact, uh, terms and conditions as the Pew one that we voted on. So I wanted to just highlight that for the record, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Burrows. Uh, uh, next, uh, Board Member Adam Stafford.
So we can make a motion to adjourn.
Is that what she said?
No, that's what I'm saying, she said that's okay.
Okay.
I would like to speak after, um, because I can't raise my hand because I'm co-host. I would like to speak before we go to recess.
Okay, Board Member Williams, you're next.
I just wanted to make a point of clarification. The issue was never the contract, the issue was the process in which the meeting was held. And being, with that being said, the signed contract was never provided to the board chair. Or vice chair or procurement to move that forward. When was, when we asked to get that contract, we never received the signed copy to process it through. And so when the, when I made the suggestion that we meet with her, go through the contract, work with procurement to do it properly. And, no, what I stated was to work with procurement to get a legal counsel on board. That was the process that we attempted to do. And when Ms. Pugh, uh, decided to withdraw herself. Then we had to go with the second option. And there was a statement that was made earlier regarding the board chair and vice chair not working to get legal counsel on board. We were doing it the proper way, which was to either piggyback on someone else's contract that had already been competitively bid. And for the notification of the board and the public, we got several. People who decided they did not want to participate in that. And so I just want to make sure everyone understands that, that, that is what was occurring. And as we were moving forward and finding this last, uh, the second choice. The board, seven board members decided to ha- hold a meeting to award a contract that had not been. Vetted and processed completely through procurement. Had they been a part of that, then that, that contract. Had they been a part of that, then that, that contract could have been signed off appropriately. That did not occur. And in several meetings, I believe the public is fully aware that the chair asked for a copy of the signed contract. It did not, uh, present itself to the board chair nor vice chair. And so with that stated, I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that the contract was not an issue. The contract use and the process from getting it from approval to, uh, signature, that is the part that we had issue with. And that never occurred. Up until this point, we have never received a signed contract, a fully executed signed contract. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Uh, board member Harris, this is your first round.
Yeah, um, thank you for recognizing me. I'll make it quick. For the sake of the record, um, was the board notified when board leadership started the process of vetting for legal counsel?
Yes.
Okay. And that, okay, is not to accept, it's just to acknowledge the.
We, we started the process as soon as we accepted the resignation of the previous counsel. And in that 60 days, we started that process, which is what the board leadership does. It facilitates the board. And we were working with procurement to find a contract to piggyback on. And as I mentioned, we got no takers. And then we found the consultant who is currently under contract. But board members, seven board members held a special meeting to, uh, get under contract another counsel. So the awareness was made when we accepted the previous counsel's, uh, contract to be, to be released from the contract. And we started that process then, as was asked.
Okay, just one, one, one follow-up. And I apologize if I missed the notification, but you said when legal counselor Roger Thomas resigned or put in his resignation is when the board was notified that board leadership started to vet, uh, new candidates.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, the next, I saw, um, I guess this is a new round. So.
Break you out. Ahmed is up next.
Okay.
Board member?
Thank you both. Um, Ms. Williams, I'm hearing you when you're saying, and you've said twice here, the issue was never the contract. I'm confused then because then there should have been no issue in the chair signing the contract when seven members of the board voted to, uh, approve it. Um, additionally, it should be noted, and members of the public can go back and view this, that on the April 28th meeting, when we closed the meeting, there were eight members of the board then. Um, so this issue, regardless of that, there was a justification provided for why seven members of the board could close the meeting for this item as well. I want members of the public to know, you can go back and you can review that, as I've said before, to see what the justification is for that meeting. And then if you say, Ms. Madam Vice Chair, that the issue was never the contract, then there should have been no issue in voting for the contract when it came again before the board on May 12th. Uh, we all know that that was not what had occurred at the May 12th meeting, and that's why we're here today. But I do want to note that if the issue was never the contract, I'm confused because it seems like the actions that were taken, uh, don't, don't support that, that statement. And there's, there's no need for a response on this. I just wanted to share my perspective on the situation and what I'm hearing, um, and my reflection upon that. Thank you.
Uh, board ma, board member Adam Stafford?
I just want to note that I do not recall receiving notification after Roger Thomas left that a formal process had begun. And colleagues, please correct me if I'm wrong here. Um, but that, that didn't happen. And so, you know, Dr. Miller was compelled by the board at the April 28th meeting to sign the contract. Please, public, please understand this. We had to add that provision in and voted on that for her to, for Dr. Miller to sign the contract. And we had to use that level of specificity because she often does things in, in her own time, in her own way, including like shutting down the board meeting, uh, for the month of February. So she was compelled to sign the contract, which she did not. So if the issue was never the contract, why didn't, why did you refuse to sign it? Um, was it because you wanted this specific company to win the contract? Because it's like if the note, there's no difference except for the actual company, then why was there this pressure really campaign to get rid of the, the current, the company that was signed within the contract? Um, and so I just, you know, I'm just really confused at the process here. It's another, another example of information hoarding, not really being, you know, let into the process and treated as colleagues. Um, and thi, and this is why we have a lot of the problems that we're having now.
Were you asking me a question or just making a statement?
Just making a statement.
Board member Boozer Struther?
Uh, thank you so much. I, I, I want to state for the record that for me, the issue was the contract. That April 28th, uh, meeting was a surprise to me that a group of board members, I don't know who called the meeting. It wasn't the chair. It wasn't the vice chair. All of a sudden, there's a meeting in board docs with the name of an individual attorney. So once again, we have an individual who's being put forward to receive, you know, a contract, contract from this board event. I have no idea where that person's name came from, who was vetting them. It was not part of the official process that I experienced, that I was informed that after Roger Thomas, we would go through what we went through a couple of years ago of an open RFP process. We would receive, uh, you know, uh, folks who are interested. There would be possibly an interim and then permanent. But I don't know who gave the authority to anybody to put on a public agenda attorney pew. And I just want to state for the record that, that I didn't see that as part of a collaborative board process. So I, you know, I, 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 I feel like I have to make a clear statement about that.
Thank you, board member, uh, Boozer Struther. Board member Queen?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Um, um, I have to say in all instance, I don't, I agree with board member Boozer Struther. I don't see this as being a collaborative process either. But on the same token, you guys, as a board member, I am a team player. We're talking about two months. We need attorney. Um, I hear everybody and I believe in nobody. I mean, I believe in communication. I believe in us working together and being collaborated as a board. I know we have differences, but in reality, our public, the people who are watching us, the people, some of us were elected. Some of you guys were appointed, um, to represent. They believe, this is not what they want to hear us doing right now. They want to know, just like I want to know as a grandparent, how my two, my second grade is going to get better math work. And now that she has a learning loss, they want to know what we're going to do as a board to make sure that our students are getting everything that they need so they can succeed in Prince of the County. To be honest, they don't give a hoop about us having this proper attorney right now. So they don't want to hear it. And to be honest, I don't evil. I want to make sure that I'm serving my district's six residents. I want to make sure that not just my grandchildren and my children, but everybody I represent is getting everything they need from Dr. Goson, who we hired as a CEO and staff. And she's doing everything that she can do for this learning loss. So I hate to tell you guys, and I hate to say this word, you know, but suck it up. We got, we're going to have to get through these next two months. Sometimes, sometimes even though you want, don't want to, we're going to just have to deal with what has been done. Whether it was wrong on April 28th, whether it's wrong now, it doesn't matter. We will work together. We will get through this and we will work together as a board. And that's all I'm going to say. That was my statement.
Thank you, board member Queen. Board member Nada Jackson?
I believe board member Thomas had his hand raised before I.
Board member Thomas?
Oh, that's by accident. Go ahead, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you. Um, I, I, I really just want to emphasize the sentiments expressed by board member Queen. Um, and I just want to uplift the fact that there, a variety of different board members have spoken about, um, the current situation that we're going through, um, as well as the previous roundabout we had to go about, uh, regarding our, our counsel and our attorney. And I think something a lot of, uh, some of us may be, isn't processing or internalizing is that this is literally a parallel to the situation we just went through and we just came from. Um, the only difference is that the shoe is on the other foot. So when we talk about transparency, when we talk about process and procedure and whether it is or isn't being followed, when we talk about information being communicated, when we talk about who selected what or who selected who and how that person got selected to go on contract, it is literally a parallel. What I'm sensing right now is a lot of grandstanding, a lot of virtue signaling, a lot of speaking directly to the audience and trying to uplift your narrative and uplift your point. But really, the heart of the matter is what board member Queen said. Like, I don't, I'm not quite sure how something that supposedly has such explicit and detailed and linear process and procedure outlined could cause so much confusion and get us to this state of, um, like a stalemate of sorts. Um, but like Ms. Queen said, the layman, laywoman, they, they, they couldn't care less about, you know, you know, the fussing and the fighting and the bickering and the back and forth and whether or not our board is following procedure, even though we should probably be following procedure. Um, kids want to learn. Parents and families want their children to learn. And I'm sure this is the last thing, you know, that they want on their plate. So, th, those are my sentiments.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Uh, Mr. Thomas, is your hand still up? No. Board member Murray?
Thank you. I wanted to clarify a little bit of what's just been said. Um, there's nothing parallel about convening a public board meeting to approve a contract with the legally required amount of votes to negotiating and signing unauthorized contract, of which the board, the chair did not, and vice chair did not have the authority to do, um, on behalf of the board. Furthermore, as it relates to this kind of this broader point about why this matters and, and what this means going forward, there's no longer a point in the Board of Education meeting if the majority of the Board of Education does not hold the power of the Board of Education. And so the same way that she do anything is for everything. And so because you have violated the board in this way by saying that one or two members now speak for the entire Board of Education, they can enter contracts, they can hold us liable to pay out public taxpayer funds when they decide they like a contractor without the vote of a majority of the Board of Education. That's beyond a dangerous precedent. And that's the one that's just been set by board leadership and administration. So I wanted to clear up that difference because I think it's really critical.
Any other comments?
Madam Chair, can I make a motion to adjourn?
You did. And, uh, I think you received a second.
I didn't hear a second.
Who? Okay. It has been moved to second to adjourn this meeting. Uh, all in favor?
Aye. 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 Aye.
Any oppositions, opposes? Any abstentions? This meeting has been adjourned, is adjourned.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good one. Good night, everybody.